Good done here?
Yeah.
Welcome to the September 11th, 2018 city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Protem Aubrey?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Laquiro?
Here.
Councilmember Holling?
Here.
Please stand for the invocation by Pastor Barry and continue to stand for the Pledge of Legions after.
Let us pray. Loving Father, this is a significant day in American history. Seventeen years ago today, we looked with horror on the terrorist attacks on the World Trade Center, the Pentagon, and in Pennsylvania. As 2,996 Americans were killed, the highest massacre ever on our soil. In times like these, we remember that God is our refuge and strength, a very help in trouble. We thank you, Father, for the first responders heroes who ran toward the buildings to rescue people from the flames. We are grateful for the heroes who carry or led fellow workers down the stairs to safety. Everyday heroes with American spirit. We pray your continued blessings upon the survivors, upon the families of those who perished, in courage and comfort and sustain them, we pray. America will never forget this day and those who lost their lives. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with a light from above, from the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with foam. God bless America, our home, sweet home. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing for a moment of silence for those that have fallen in 2001, September 11th? Counsel? I'd like to ask for an approval of the agenda that's been revised.
I'll move approval of the revised agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Dissension? No one? Discussion? We have a revised agenda. Civic announcements. I would like to have anyone come up for civic announcements, please, at this time. See a few of you.
I'm Bill Hitchcock, Maple Court, Hazel Park. Our family moved into this area even before this was a city. A few years later, when it was decided to have a vote and divide this community into a city, my family was very active because we needed the protection of the police and fire, which we were not getting much help at that time. A few months ago, a friend of mine mentioned that he was on a committee that was honoring the Detroit Police Department, and I came with the idea that if it wasn't for the police and fire, I might not even be alive today. Three and a half years ago, I got backed over walking across Marinco parking lot, and if it wasn't for the quick response of the fire department and ambulance, I was unconscious for about a day, getting me to Beaumont Hospital, probably wouldn't be standing here tonight. The police were very active also. The detective followed up. Person took off, but they had a video of who he was, and he ended up with six to 10 years in jail. Followed that up, we're trying to put him away as a habitual offender, having had trouble in all of our neighboring communities besides Hazel Park. I would, I came with the idea to honor our police and fire department and talked with Mr. Klobuchar, and have come up with the idea that on October the 18th, which is a Thursday, we'd like to, I bring together the community, not just the city, but I've talked to the Hazel Park Board of Education, and they're supporting this concept, as well as I've talked to a number of churches in our town, and I'd like to work to bring the community together, the schools, the city, and the churches in our area, to honor our police and fire. Sometimes we take it for granted of what these people do, take it in a situation like I had. And we're going to have a dinner on October 18th at the Hazel Park High School. Table is about, is $100 for ten, to seat a table. Would encourage any of you to bought a table and help for seat the fire and the policemen at the dinner. We'll be honoring them with a plaque. Sheriff Mike Bouchard will be the speaker, and we'll be honoring one in particular of the fire and one of the policemen at this event. So I'd like to encourage you to be a part of that process as we go forward to honor an important part of our community, our police and fire. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Do you have a time for that, Bill?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock at the high school.
At the Hazel Park High School.
Outstanding, Mr. Hitchcock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tickets are being printed, and as soon as we have ticketing information, we will place that ticketing information on our city's website, our Facebook page, and cable TV.
Anyone else wishing to speak on civic announcements?
Hello, Mike Jones, I live over on West Nine Mile. I want to talk about the, talk about Arttober and our alley party that we do, we've done the last two or three years. I've lost count. Two or three years, we're continuing this year with our alley party. It's going to be October 6th, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. This year, we're, we're being, we're hosted by the West End Hazel Park Business Owners Coalition, of which I was elected president before I knew the position was available.
Congratulations.
Thanks. So.
A default?
Yeah, exactly. I lost my train of thought. Anyway, October 6th, West End Hazel Park Business Owners Coalition hosting it. It'll be the same kind of setup as last year. We're going to ask Department of Public Works to block off either end of the alley. We'll have local artists displaying their craft. We're inviting any civic organizations to come set up a table or a kiosk and get their information out. We'll have a couple bands play. We'll have food from a couple different vendors. Hazel Park's Art Council, I believe, is working on license for a beer tent. I think that's it. I think that's the rundown.
Mr. Jones, are the talented women in your life going to be presenting?
Yeah, I was just going to say that. Is somebody going to sing?
Yes. I believe my wife's band is playing. They're the Tellways. You can find them on Facebook, SoundCloud. Shameless plug, the Tellways. I'll be selling T-shirts that night, and her art, I believe, will be on display also.
Mr. Jones, do you have an email so people can, or a website that people can go to to see all the details or to register for a booth?
They can contact, well, so the way it's set up, my wife has put out a call to art, to artists that she knows. A couple other artists have put out calls to art, including Rick Gage and Nina, whose last name I can't remember.
Cairo.
That's the one. So I can give you my, I don't have an email address, but I can give you my phone number for any artists who want to contact me for.
You want to, you got a phone number you can put out there?
Yep. 708-606-1158. I'm sure you can also go through, you can contact Rick Gage also. I don't have his number on me. I block his number.
We understand.
Yeah, I think that's all I got.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I went last year. This was a fun event. I encourage everyone to go. It was a good time.
Good time.
Great time.
Mayor Protem would like to have a question with you.
So this event helps kick off Arttober, which is actually a month-long event sponsored by the Hazel Park Arts Council, so the two organizations work together. We're also going to be helping recruit any artists and bands. If you want more information, you can also just email us at info@hpart.org, and we will pass all those inquiries on. So everybody's working together because Rick Gage is also part of the Hazel Park Arts Council. So we'll, you know, you can contact either organization, and we'll help get you set up with the information. And then the larger event itself is citywide, which will feature art installations throughout the month of October, and once those are put up, there will be a map available as well. So starting October 6th, you can, you know, kick the night off right, go party with everybody, and then throughout the month, you can take a walk, take a bike ride, and check out all of these great artists throughout the entire month.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks.
Any other civic announcements? You've been waiting patiently.
Hello, my name is Jeff Bruff. I'm with Hazel Park Youth Assistance. I'm mostly here today just to really introduce myself and say hello to everyone. Gary Gazowski was here before me, and he retired back in May, so I am now taking his position. Additionally, I wanted to thank the city and thank all the support that we've had since 1953 for Hazel Park Youth Assistance and that we continue to have. I look forward to working with the city, look forward to work with this community, and look forward to working with the families and the youth that are also here. So again, just saying hi and introducing myself. I also have flyers for Youth Assistance and my business card, if you guys would like those as well, so.
Jeff, it was nice meeting you at the hometown huddle.
Yes, it was fun. I had a good time then. Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you with Youth Assistance in the future. This is going to be a good thing for Youth Assistance, and you'll find Hazel Park's a wonderful community. That's very supportive.
So far, for the month that I've been here, it has been. It's been great.
Thanks for coming.
Very good.
Anyone else for civic announcements? All right, Jared.
Jared Gageos with Hazel Park Community Coalition. Hi, how low?
How are you doing?
Some tall. So just something small, this month, we're recognizing National Suicide Prevention Month. We've been running a campaign throughout the community and mostly with the high school. We've been passing out these little cool ribbons. They're teal and purple. Suicide prevention also associated with yellow ribbons, but either or, as long as you're bringing prevention. So we have about 200 ribbons left. I know a lot of community members have been reaching out, saying, "How do we get some?" Amy Croupy at the school, she has some, and then I have some here. I have about 100 here. I think she has 100, so if anyone wants one, we have them. It runs all month long. This week is National Suicide Prevention Week. Monday was National Suicide Prevention Day. So if anyone wants any, just reach out to us, and thank you, guys, for everything. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Jared. A shameless plug for Mr. Jared Gageos. He's not just the executive director of the Hazel Park Coalition. He also works half-time in my office as my administrative assistant, and he is invaluable. So thank you for all that you do, Jared.
Anyone else?
I have something, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Linda Yono for reminding me. The Fire Department Open House is going to be on Sunday, October 7th this year. Do you know what time it starts, Linda? 11:00. So 11:00 a.m. in the morning. It's a good time. If you haven't seen it, come on out, meet your fire department, see our fire apparatuses. They do demonstrations. They give out cider and donuts. It's a great opportunity for the kids to get a chance to shoot the fire hose and to learn about fire prevention and things like that. So it's always a well-attended, fun event. I encourage everyone to come out. Fire Open House, Sunday, October 7th, 11:00 a.m.
Any other comments from the public for civic announcements? Hearing none, we'll close civic announcements, and now we'll go to the city council for civic announcements.
Your Honor, that's going to be a busy weekend. October 5th at Hazel Park Junior High School, the Hazel Park Creative Arts are hosting our annual fundraiser. Those of you that have been following, we're basically an arts booster for the school district and have had a couple of very large projects. Akil and the soundboard, light board at the high school that used to operate on floppy disk was replaced just in time for Seussical the Musical. We don't have a project yet, but we're raising money, and the tickets are $10 and $15. I think $10 for students, 15 for adults. We do have a website. Hazel Park Creative Arts is also on Facebook, and I would encourage folks to come out. The food is going to be outstanding. The cook is amazing. And again, I'd just like to ask everyone to come out. So it's going to be Friday is our event, Saturday is the alley event, and then the fire station open house. So it's going to be a busy, fun weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council for civic announcements? Are you none? Any more civic announcements from Mr. Klobuchar?
None that I can think of.
Okay. We'll close the civic announcements again. Public discussion, anyone wishing to come up and speak about anything they would like to get off their chests? Hearing, seeing no public discussion. It's unusual, it's such a good crowd. All right, that would take us to the special presentations. Resolution honoring Donald Liel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are the family members of Donald Liel in the, there you go. Why don't you come up to, Mr. Mayor, do you want to hand this out while I read the resolution?
Yep. Donald Liel, please come up.
He's, it's his family. He's.
The family?
City of Hazel Park, a resolution honoring Donald Liel. Whereas Donald Liel chose to serve the City of Hazel Park as a Reserve Auxiliary Police Officer from 2000 to 2007, and again from 2013 to 2018. And whereas, the officers of the Hazel Park Police Reserve Auxiliary Unit play an important role in assisting the Hazel Park Police Department in its mission to protect the City of Hazel Park, volunteering their time to participate in and assist with law enforcement functions. And whereas, Donald Liel served Hazel Park honorably diligently participating in reserve unit details and assignments until his health would no longer permit his continued participation. And whereas, although Donald Liel recently passed away, he leaves a legacy of dedicated service to the Hazel Park Police Reserve Auxiliary Unit. So therefore, be it resolved, the Hazel Park City Council hereby honors Donald Liel and conveys to his family and friends our deepest sympathy. His legacy of service will be remembered. On behalf of the City of Hazel Park, I want to tell you how saddened that we all were, and I knew Don, that, how saddened I was to learn that he passed so young. It's very sad and very tragic, and, but I want you to know that he was a good man, and the service that he gave this community was important, and we will not forget him. So I'm glad that we can hand this out to you tonight. God bless you, and again, on behalf of mayor and council, we're so sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing him with us.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Another resolution honoring Joanne Taylor from the Hazel Park Bowl.
Is Joanne in the audience? Are Joanne's family members in the audience? We'll put this one off and see if we can get Joanne next week, I mean, next meeting.
Okay.
Joanne going once, Joanne going twice? Is the Oakland Community Health Network National Recovery, folks here? Okay. Would you like to say something, sir?
My name is Mark Jones. I'm a resident of Ferndale, but I'm an employee of the Oakland Community Health Network, formerly Oakland County Community Mental Health. I have a proclamation for National Recovery Month in September 2018. Whereas substance use recovery is an important part for individual well-being and vitality, as well as for families, communities, and businesses. And whereas opioids were involved in 42,249 deaths in 2016, and opioid overdose deaths were five times higher in 2016 than in 1999. And whereas, one in five teens abuse prescription drugs before the age of 13. And whereas, according to the CDC, in 2016, there were 2,347 Michigan residents that died from overdose in Michigan. We will, whereas, we will continue to educate and raise awareness of the risk and potential harm associated with prescription drug misuse. And whereas, we believe everyone facing substance use disorders deserve the benefit of recovery. And whereas, Friday, September 21st, 2018, has been designated for Oakland County's 11th Annual Substance Use Recovery Celebration and Walk. And whereas, stigma and stereotypes associated with substance use disorder often keep people from seeking treatment that could improve their quality of life. And whereas, substance use disorders occur when the recurrent use of alcohol and/or drugs cause clinical, clinically or functionally significant impairment, such as health problems, disability, and failure to meet major responsibilities at work, school, or home. And whereas, substance use disorder recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people to live in a community of their choice while striving to achieve their full potential. And whereas, substance use disorder recovery benefits individuals with substance use disorders by focusing their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute in our society, and also enriches the culture of our community. And now, therefore, be it resolved, that Oakland Community Health Network hereby recognize September 2018 as National Recovery Month. OCHN calls upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of substance use and the need to.
Administrative reports, public hearing in a brownfield redevelopment authority plan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, would you like to open the public hearing on the brownfield plan, please? I'll give you a brief synopsis. Basically, the City of Hazel Park is involved in discussions with Ashley Capital to develop a brownfield plan to enable redevelopment of the closed racetrack area. As you all know, this particular property was the former Highland Park dump portions of this, and there is a substantial amount of contamination there in order for this redevelopment assistance was required, and we believe that we're bringing a very good plan to the City of Hazel Park that will enable them to redevelop and at the same time add additional tax revenue to our. So we submit it to you for your consideration and humbly request your approval.
Opening up to the public hearing, brownfield redevelopment plan. Anyone wishing to speak, make comments on? Seeing no one. Just for the general public's knowledge, we are, the City of Hazel Park will be, we will be receiving 23% of the taxes captured on this site, which is more than most at that point, because the other facility, we got much less.
We did, and this is a good agreement, and I humbly request that it be approved.
Counsel? Close the public hearing.
I move approval of the brownfield redevelopment plan as presented.
I'll second.
Have a question.
Go ahead.
How is it that the ice arena parking lot had been added into the drawing? Was it just an oversight or?
Oh, it's actually not just an oversight, because when my predecessor built the ice arena, he simply paved over that portion and included it in the ice arena.
I think they had some kind of.
Adverse possession?
Again, I think the easiest course of action is that they need a brownfield and we'll take that piece of property. So we'll shake hands. It will be done all legally and properly, but yes, that is the truth. And it was never an issue because, you know, we had a agreement to put the track in Danny Atkins, and he was always going to deed it over to us, but it never became an issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just a comment on this. I attended a brownfield sort of conference hosted by Oakland County, and when I was talking to people there about the tax capture on this, they were amazed that we were getting 23%. It was nice to be able to talk about our community with pride in the fact that our administration works really, really hard, and I think that that is something that is oftentimes a bit nitpicked. So this is a good development for our city. It is sad that we lost our racetrack, but times change, and this is going to benefit us significantly in the long run and bring jobs and opportunities to our city, as well as financial, financial benefit as well. So I just want to say, it's something that I'm really proud of, and it was nice to get that kind of feedback from people that weren't part of our community.
Any other comments?
Thank you for your kind words, Councilwoman.
Hey, I'd like to, any dissension to the vote? Motion passes. Item two of the Freedom of Information Act.
Mr. Mayor, I'll defer to City Attorney Melissa Schwartz on this. First of all, there may be, is there legal counsel here from, we did receive a call from the office requesting time to speak to the city council and address this. So is there anybody here from the firm, from Vicano and Rosenthal that wishes to speak? Seeing no one wishing to speak, the administration recommends the appeal be denied.
Yes, the information that the municipality obtains from an applicant under the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act is exempt from disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act. Therefore, the requested information that they are appealing, we cannot provide because the state statute does not allow it. It is exempt.
And, Mr. Finckley, make sure the record reflects verbatim that we did ask if they were here and wish to speak.
And if I could just add for the record, the citation is MCL 333.27205, and it is number four. I do have it available if anyone on council wishes to see it.
Mr. Mayor, I would move approval of the denial of the Freedom of Information Act as presented.
Do we have its support?
I'll support.
Do we have discussion? Motion passes. Takes us to the boards and commissions, appointment of Richard Ayers II to the Arts Council.
Mr. Mayor, so Richard Ayers came to the Hazel Park Arts Council meeting last night and introduced himself. He's a local resident who does murals and screen printing. He's very interested in getting involved, and we're very much looking forward to appointing him to the Arts Council and bringing him on board.
Is that a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
Do we have a support?
Support.
Any dissension? Any more discussion? Welcome to the Arts Council, Richard Ayers. Tabled items, seeing none. New business? I'll open up for new business. City Council, administration?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The administration would respectfully request council consider granting another marijuana-related license, this one for a 500 plant grow at the location of 21216 John R. I have copies of their application here, the original application, if you would like to take one, pass one down. I'm making a request in consultation with our. I'm making a request in consultation with our city attorneys after a review of their application.
Just to clarify, this is the only five-hundred grow that was applied for, correct?
That is correct.
And the color information we have here, these are updated?
These are, I believe, updated color information that the applicant has provided.
It's much nicer than the original.
I think it looks nicer, but it's a matter, I guess, of opinion. Some people like the traditional brick, some people like this color.
And I would-
I like it.
Yeah.
Yes, and Collins likes the original brick.
It's one of the last remaining ones we have with original brick, and it had herringbone at the top. So is this what we're looking at as a plan now? Because this is not the one we had.
This is a slight modification with an improvement to the business.
Would this approval be conditional?
They're all conditional with the approval of the administration to review the plan.
I am going to kind of miss the pop-up flea market.
I understand, it will be a tragedy for all of us.
City council, have enough time to look at the plan, the old plan and the new revised?
I remember reviewing this at the meeting. I'm comfortable making a motion to approve applicant number thirty-four with discussion.
I would support?
Support.
Opens up for discussion?
I just want to remind everybody, as these continue to come before us, like I've stated at previous meetings, and I want to remind everybody again, this process is ongoing, we are still reviewing applications for people that have made amendments, we are still obviously approving licenses, the year's not over. So I just, just want to remind everybody who said, you know, everything was a done deal, that this was not a done deal, and that we are taking our time to appropriately review all of these applications.
Additional discussion? They've painted the building, and I'm seeing some decorative lighting and green plants, which are going to be replaced by snow here real soon. There needs to be something a little bit more done with the outside. This, this is not much better.
Perhaps I can recommend a mural?
I don't think we can have the murals on the marijuana businesses. I thought that was a-
You could have a mural, but you could not have a mural sign.
It can't be a sign.
Yeah.
So it could be an unrelated mural?
I don't know.
Why don't we-
Don't think a mural is going to-
Why, why don't we-
I have a question.
Okay.
For the applicants, are the applicants here? Will they please come up? Just get it out in the open. The planners you have in front of your business, the new updated exterior facade, are those permanent planners?
Yes.
And they will be conditional to maintain these whether it's snow or, or spring?
Absolutely.
And I'd like to also maybe indulge upon your site plan to upgrade the sidewalks as well.
Oh, we were doing that anyway.
I couldn't tell from just the-
So, yeah, we, so Tom from, sorry, yep, from DPW has, we've actually walked through multiple of our businesses, and they're all getting redone, so, and anything that they've identified, and actually, I don't even know if those were identified, but we were going to, they're part of our quote to redo the parking lot. Part of the back is grass, and part of it is paved, and we're redoing the whole, the whole thing to make it all-
Would you be willing to work with the administration to try to address some of Councilwoman Collins' ideas and concerns?
Absolutely.
And would you be receptive to that?
Oh, absolutely. You know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just looking at-
Without, well, remembering, we can't, you know, we, we've got to balance some stuff.
Do you mind if I make one, so prior, prior to, that, that building was essentially blighted. It was, there was a woman there that was hoarding and-
Big time.
Big time, and I don't know what kind of business she was running there.
She's, she's picked out of the garbage and then tried to sell it.
It's still bad.
Yeah, we spent almost fifteen thousand in just demo and haul away and just getting it all cleaned up.
Got you.
Yeah, I, I just, I, this, I'm a broken record here with this, but the whole purpose of these licenses were the buildings were going to have significant improvement, and a coat of paint and some lights and some plants is really, you know, I, I just, I want to see more. This is what I drive by when my parents come to visit, they're going to know where to turn by, they're going to get lost actually by all the blue buildings. So, I want a little more.
We're open to any suggestions.
I think in the beginning-
The entire council, so everybody gets a chance to-
In the beginning, we had discussions with our administration in drawing up the ordinances and codes for how we would like to see the buildings, and they were put into the description as a different qualifications and requirements. Maybe some copper accents or some, like some fabric awnings or something of that nature to kind of give it a little decor. And soften the color a little to the neighborhood. Color is nice, but it's getting a little too repetitive in the community.
Well, we did our best to create some variation.
And what's going on at one of the other sites looks nicest.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's, that's the direction I'd like to see this go.
Kind of give it a nice finish.
Yeah, because we don't, we don't have too terribly many buildings with-
We don't want to look like-
Sorry, Your Honor.
Excuse me. We don't want it to look like every other building, but we want them to kind of have their own in-
Character.
Character, you know, interface to the community as well.
Absolutely.
And this one has character. It's one of the few remaining brick storefronts that has peaks and pitches and just definition, and, and it has potential to be, you know, we're not going to be able to walk in and shop there, but I'm going to drive by it and walk my dog by it two or three times a day.
I'd love to talk to council, planning, and, you know, whatever suggestions you have, we'd love to work with you on that.
Any other council members have any other questions?
I have one more comment, Your Honor.
Sure.
I sound, I'm kind of a negative Nancy on this, but I really strongly feel that if we are going to open these again, we need more notice and a chance to really discuss these, not a few hours prior to council going forward, because we are open to adding additional licenses that never, nobody's been shut out of the process, and I, I need to reiterate that. It's nothing, absolutely nothing personal, it's just I don't do last minute very well.
Thank you for your time.
Agreed.
Counsel, do we have any dissenting to this motion? Any more discussion? Hearing none. Motion passes, thank you. And that takes us to the communications from department heads. We have a few department heads here, would they like to come up? Chief? See the shiny badges give you away.
I don't really have much to talk about today, but I do thank everyone for thinking of Patriot Day and lovely words you had this, this, this evening and the moment of silence. Also like to honor Donald Liel also, that's tremendous amount of time that he volunteered to our reserve unit, and we appreciate that, and more in the passing also. Also thank you to Bill Hitchcock for organizing the dinner also for us. This was a sad tragedy day, and as I talked to people today, I asked them what they were doing when that happened, when they found out, and it's, people remember it very well, and it's, it's a good thing to remember. Hopefully, we'll, I also want to thank the city of Hazel Park, they've always supported our police department, even in times across the country, I think, we're not seen in the best of light in our profession, and the city of Hazel Park still stood behind us. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other department heads want to come up?
Tom?
Tom? Jared?
Tom's scooting away.
Linda?
All right, that takes us down to the city attorney. Any comments?
No, sir, thank you.
City manager?
Hold on, I think I've been texted something I need to bring up. Oh. There's a citywide garage sale that is happening on September fourteenth. What else do I need to say about this? It's from September fourteenth to September sixteenth. Who is putting it on, and who do they need to speak to, Linda? Neighborhood enrichment. And it will be on the city's Facebook page, the city's website, and hopefully cable TV.
Where's it located this week?
It's the citywide.
Citywide office.
It's whoever wants to have a garage sale.
There's a map.
At their homes.
There's a map that they'll be putting online.
A map online. Hey, any other comments, Mr. Manager?
You know what? I do have comments, and I want to talk a little bit about nine eleven, because I remember nine eleven vividly. I was assistant city manager then, and I was holding staff meeting, because my predecessor was in court at Oakland County that day on a personal matter, so I was chairing staff meeting, and an employee from the city clerk's office banged down the door, and she said, "I'm sorry to interrupt that, but your wife called," and she said, "You would want to know, terrorists have attacked the World Trade Center." And I said, "Well, thank you, yes." That's something, you, you interrupt the staff meeting to tell the city administration that this has happened. We put on the TV, and at that point, both buildings had been struck, but were still standing, and we watched how the building burned, and then the first building began to collapse, and then subsequently, the second building began to collapse. We watched both of them collapse with the loss of life that took place there that day. And I want to tell you, Hazel Park was ready, the city came together, Mike, you were on council at the time, and, or it was right before the council election, pardon me, but you were running, and Andy was running, and I think that you both remember how the entire community came together and came together very quickly to rally around our country, and to make sure that the folks in New York had what they need. For the first two years after that happened, homeland security issues seemed to dominate everything that we did, and no one knew if and when subsequent attacks were going to follow, but I was proud that Hazel Park was ready. By the end of the day, we'd already met with the school system, we'd had a citywide meeting, we were ready, our fire department was ready to go if anything happened in the metro Detroit area, our police department was ready to go, we were prepared. And this brings to mind an experience that I had at Harvard back in two thousand and six, when I was privileged to attend the Harvard Senior Executive Program with two gentlemen who were very much a part of the nine eleven attacks. The first was the Deputy Chief of Police for Internal Affairs for the New York City Police Department, and the second was a man named Joe Pfeifer, who was head of counterterrorism for the New York Fire Department. And Joe put on a special impromptu class for all of us at the Harvard program on nine eleven, because he was followed around that day by a TV crew from the Discovery Channel that was doing a story about the day in the life of a new firefighter. So when the planes hit the buildings, you got to see Joe in action responding to the World Trade Center, and there's video of Joe Pfeifer, my classmate, in the lobby of the World Trade Center before it collapses. There's a battalion of firefighters that he is sending up the stairway to rescue those people trapped at the top of that building. He gives the order, he sends them up, and he exits the World Trade Center with the film crew. We know what happened to that battalion. What I never knew until I got a chance to meet Joe, was the man that he sent up there was his brother. So he sent his own brother up those stairs to rescue those people who were trapped in that burning building. So we need to remember the heroism that day from our first responders, of whom we lost many. We need to remember that there are men and women who placed themselves in between us and the danger. When everybody else runs away, they have to run towards it. Those men and women are my brothers and sisters, and I thank them every day for their sacrifice. In the wake of that terrible tragedy, my stepson joined the military. I want to thank the city of Hazel Park for the many times that I came to these meetings and I said, "Hey, we're looking for items for his unit, can you drop them off at the city clerk's office?" And how many times the city of Hazel Park responded, and I was able to send large care packages off to his unit when they were fighting in Iraq. So the events at nine eleven changed things in this country, and some of those things for the better, some of those things for, for worse, but at the core of it all, we need to remember that there were some very brave people that passed that day, and there were very brave people that passed in the years after that because of the events that were created by that incident, and today, there are still brave men and women who protect us in the military and our first responder community. So I want to thank them all for their service and let them know that their sacrifice and their dedication is not forgotten. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, person Alyssa Sullivan?
I, I'd like to echo Ed Sentman about this day in history. I think those of us that experienced it all have our individual recognition of it yearly, and I think it's probably one of, in current times, the most emotional days for people. I, I don't think any of us don't remember where we were that day, and I've had that conversation multiple times today. So thank you to our first responders, thank you for the people that keep us safe, and hug your loved ones, remember them on days like today, and, and let these things help us as a country continue to grow and move forward and progress. I want to thank everybody for attending tonight. The recognitions that we have, the resolutions that we made, I think are important to this community. If you have a friend that's maybe feeling a bit down, Suicide Prevention Month, reach out to them, always be a friend, always be kind, choose the, choose the nicer path.
Counsel, one person, Hollis.
Thank you all for coming out tonight, and everyone who's watching at home. Have a couple of things, Linda, thank you for sharing the plaque for pride recognition and the flag before it faded its colors. Jesse, before you leave tonight, I want to give this to you and Richard to take to the museum. One of our new commissioners is here tonight. We're still working on acquiring some things to recognize marriage equality, which started here in Hazel Park. So the museum is growing, we are still, still growing, and will be open on the twentieth, Thursday, the twentieth, from six to eight. I will not be here, because I believe all of us are going to be in Grand Rapids for the Michigan Municipal League, so we can continue our education to be better elected and, and public servants. I want to recognize one of our police officers who rarely gets attention, because he's usually ticking people off, writing tickets for them on no parking day. We have a resident that recently had a health issue and has a physical therapist coming in, and phone calls were made, you know, "Please don't ticket my physical therapist, we've got a car out on the street, we'll correct this next week, but this is going to be an ongoing thing." And Officer Gomez made a point to go talk to this resident and explain to them their options on temporary parking. He didn't have to do that, and the dispatch officer also walked him through it, but Officer Gomez made the point to go to this family's house, knock on their door, introduce himself, and help them get through what, you know, somebody who never has broken the law, that was pretty traumatic for him. So I want to thank him and all the men and women of our departments that just go out of the way every day. And then nine eleven. Seventeen years ago, I dropped my daughter off at first grade, and our neighbor and a friend, whose father worked for Border Patrol, Homeland Security now, and I had been home for maybe a half hour, and the phone started blowing up, and that young man's father was on call basically twenty-four hours a day for the next six months. What I remember most is just the planes stopping flying from the sky. You're used to seeing them flying overhead in the chemtrails, and they just, there were less and less and less, and it was an absolute beautiful blue sky that day, and then we had the military jets that came by. One of the hardest things was a friend, I hadn't talked to her in ten years, and her mother had gone through her school phone book and tracked down my parents' number to talk to me, because she was working in one of the towers, and had I heard from her? I think you all know the answer. We lost over three thousand people, countless others to suicide and illness afterwards, but we had over thirty thousand that were saved, because we had men and women who answered the call and went into those buildings and pulled people out, did recovery efforts, and the saddest thing is when you're in recovery and there's nothing to recover, you stand around. Our men and women here, and Chief, you, you were here, everybody wanted to pack up and go and help, and there was nothing we could do. Folks around here organized blood drives, and they looked out for each other. Folks around here organized blood drives, and they looked out for each other. People just spontaneously gathered and supported each other, and I'll tell you, for one of the worst days in our country, it was a proud day to be an American, proud day. And I do not take our men and women in uniform, be it local or be it those who actively serve in the military or any of our agencies. They take their job serious, and they look out for us, and I am so grateful for each of them, and that we can be here tonight together and to serve as a local elected official. It's amazing, the people that we have that have our backs. So thank you all for coming out. Thank you.
Counselperson Allo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. School is open, so reminding everybody to watch out for the kids coming to and from school. As far as comments on the 9/11, 2001, I would just like to say, I had picked up where Tom Selman had left off, and I've kind of let that slide away. So I will say what Tom always used to say after he told everybody, "Thanks for coming out. If you love someone, tell them, and if you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. Thank you for coming out."
There's a lot of great comments here this evening, remembering, paying tribute to the 9/11 victims. But I want to go back a little further. December 7th, 2019, 41, sorry. It was another day that will live in infamy, as we all have heard that phrase from our president back then. 2000, you know, September 11th, 2001, is another day that lives in infamy in our souls. Together, we inspire others without having to say it. We are a family of Americans, no matter how we feel about each other or made comments or acted out against each other. When we push come to shove, we are the strongest and most free-thinking society in the world. And that's what we stand on, our pride as Americans. And these people sacrificed their lives to be able to provide that freedom for us. I don't think any of us should ever forget that. Thank you for coming out. It's cloverture, do we have an exec session?
Nope.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Support?
Support.
Thank you.